I'd like to call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. In God we gather in this time of celebrations among families and with our institutions. We pray that we will be guided by our preferences and our loyalties. For these freedom we gather as grateful people, by individual blessings and for the common good shared by all of us. So with grateful hearts, we pray that you'll guide us to do all that is in your will for the good of those who live here as we meet tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
Joining the pledge?
Let us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, the roll.
Carrie Hopps, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2. Louis Thomas Power, Ward 3. Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4. Diane Tate, Ward 5. Lori Truitt, Ward 6.
Thank you, Connie. First order of business is the approval of our meeting from the, or minutes from the December 5th meeting. The council, you've had these couple days to review. Chair will entertain any edits, additions, corrections, and if there are none, the motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We have got some appointments to handle, and those will be handled by Mr. Lovell.
Mayor, the first item is the Marco Cartersville Second Joint Development Authority. That was created a few years back. The initial staggered term, a shortened term of two years, for Mr. Greg Frisby and Mr. Lamar Pendley expire this year. They have both indicated a willingness to be reappointed. Their new term will be for full standard on three years, I believe. Yes.
Any questions or comments? And if not, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve these two persons.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manino, you'll handle the Planning Commission appointments, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The terms of four of our Planning Commission members are expiring, and with that, your appointment, the mayor's appointment, Lamar Pendley, Ward 1 appointment, Travis Popham, Ward 3 appointment, Ralph Miller, and Ward 5 appointment, Sandra Klein. And all the current members that I just noted are willing to continue to serve if reappointed. With that, we recommend you make appointments on this action item.
Okay. Any discussion? While I do a little bit. If there's no discussion, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve those persons have been named.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Randy, you're right back at it. We have a few first reading of ordinances this evening.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor, Council. This particular proposed amendment is to the alcohol license ordinance. The county has requested that we add a section in there for proof of payment of outstanding ad valorem tax that has been made. With that, at time of issuance of a license, for a new license, the city would look that up, check with the county, to make sure as one of our checkoff items before issuance of said license. With that, we recommend approval of this ordinance.
Okay. There's no discussion on it, we vote on it next time. And you've got the next one as you walk, Wade Doody not? You're just changing out pieces of paper, huh?
I'll be pretty long.
There you go. Yeah, it's gonna be the Randy Manino show for a little while.
The next item is proposed amendment to the swimming pool code. The state DC Department of Community Affairs has adopted a new international code for swimming pools. It now includes swimming pools, spa codes, and water parks with it. The last time we adopted the pool code, or the old code, was the 1997 edition. We amended in 2001. With that, we recommend adoption of the new 2014 international swimming pool and spa code.
Okay. Any questions for Randy on this item at this point? All right, we'll take that up for final consideration at our first meeting of January. And we'll move on to, again, more first readings and non-voting things. These relative to zoning and annexation. The first one is T-1305.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed tax amendment to the zoning ordinance. Back in 2010, when we rewrote the zoning ordinance, several or all the residential categories included an optional density bonus within the code. There were three different things that you could do to get a, get a density bonus. The density bonus would allow you to do a slightly smaller lot if you complied with such things as elite certified home, or earthcraft house, or certain percentage of the exterior of the home being rock, brick, stucco. With that, the third item, which included a donation of land in the past year, based on the city attorney's office, their review of some Supreme Court rulings, that particular item, or item number three in those, in that list, needs to be removed from our zoning ordinance. And with that, we recommend your approval. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this proposed text amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on this text amendment application? Thank you. And I'll open up a public hearing relative to T-1305. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for, or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And again, council, we'll take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in January. Next item is Z-1308.
Yes, again, Mayor and Council, this is an actual change to an existing condition of zoning. This property, the Hillendale Carresville LLC property located at 150 Old Mill Road, was rezoned back in 1998 to MF14 with conditions. One of the included conditions restricted access to the property for construction purposes to River Drive for two years. At that time, they would have to close the access for construction purposes. The development was never completed, and there are several, several units, about 44 units, left to be completed. They would like the opportunity to come in from the backside of that development off of River Drive so as not to disrupt the existing community there, coming in off Old Mill Road. With that, it requires a modification of that particular condition. Planning Commission did recommend a modification of that condition to include two years from issuance of any new construction permits out there, so as there won't be a permanent access left to River Drive. So the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this with, with the modified condition.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Randy about this item at this period of time?
Mayor, a question. Mr. Manino, I understand not wanting to bother the residents of Hillendale. It just makes sense to come in off of, but what about the people own, is it Alpine? Will those people be notified that there will be a change for a while because they will hear something different or see something different? It looks like three, four, five.
The adjacent property owners were notified in accordance with the zoning standards and...
Already.
And we had, we had some folks at the Planning Commission meeting, but nobody showed up and spoke in opposition to the request.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Randy at this point? All right. I'll open up a public hearing relative to case, excuse me, file Z-13-08. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing relative to Z-13-08. And we'll take that up for final consideration at our first meeting in January. The next item is SU-13-06.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is at 617 North Tennessee Street. Formerly a location, I believe there was old floors there. Now there's a used appliance store there. The applicant, Mr. James Ford, is looking to relocate an existing pawn shop to 617 North Tennessee Street. Currently, I believe the one he currently runs is located on Burt Hickory Road. If you recall, back in 2010, we amended, when we amended the zoning ordinance, we required the use permit for pawn shops in the MU zoning district. With that, this was presented to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend approval with the condition there, that there be no outside storage associated with this business.
Okay. Any questions for Randy on this item? All right, I'll open up a public hearing relative to SU-13-06. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing for SU-13-06. And again, council, we'll take this up for final consideration at our first meeting in January. We have got, next item, Mr. Wilson, you're up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, before you is a proposal to perform a flood study for the Pettit Creek near Mission Road by Southland Engineering. The proposal to do this is for $8,090. We recommend approval of this, and this is a budgeted item, and it will become out of our stormwater budget.
Any questions for Wade on this item? Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Mr. Porter, you got the next two, please.
Yes, Mayor. The first item on there is annual telecom agreement with GMA to provide services for telecommunication management and cable services. The cost of that is $6,500 for 2014. I recommend approval of that item.
Okay. Any questions for Dan on this item? If there's no discussion, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Dan.
The next item is anti-executable software. Unfortunately, there's more virus, spyware out there, and other things that can harm city computers. And IT department has researched what's available to us, protect city property, and the cost of this is $9,278.50. Actually, he's, Stephen Greer, was able to negotiate a two-and-a-half-year maintenance within that cost. I recommend approval of this purchase, which will hopefully protect us from additional, any potential problems with city computers, downloading spyware software, or anything that may be harmful to the city network.
Okay. Any questions on this item? And if not, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve this purchase.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Hill. And Mr. Jones, you're on deck.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Gas system went out for bids for a trench box. We had three bidders. I think y'all have copies of all the bids. The winning bid bidder was J&amp;B Tool for $8,320. We recommend this, and it is a budgeted item.
Okay. Any questions for Michael on this item?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Michael, when you look at the three bids, J&amp;B Tool, the legs, the stat set, strap, freight, all that's included, and then the others, it's broken out into individual items. Is it still a good, clean bid, in your opinion?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes. They just included that in their bid. The others, I don't know why they wanted to break it out, but they did, so.
What are these, five foot?
These are four foot, 10-foot long. We've got four sections. Four panels, excuse me. It makes two sections.
Good. All right. If there's no other discussion, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael. Mr. Jones.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Council, we have before you a proposal from Southeastern Diving Services to pressure wash a 5 million gallon reservoir on Tank Hill. This is really considered routine maintenance for the exterior of this tank. The tank is visible from Tellus and from 75, and it, it is something that I think makes an impression on people when they, when they ride by. The bid's for $5,950, and it is a budgeted item.
Okay. Any questions on this?
Mayor, just sort of the same question. There's bids twice there, but you feel like this is...
We, we actually have an ongoing relationship with this company. They've done, they actually did the interior cleaning and inspection of these tanks in the last year. So they, we have a history of good performance with them, and I have no concerns about their ability to do this.
If there are no other questions, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Reinhardt, you got the next couple, I do believe. Actually, I got the next seven.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the city is in receipt of an annual maintenance con, or annual maintenance invoice from CogZell. This invoice is an increase of about 6% over last year. I talked with Kelly Skinner, the director of support for CogZell, and asked her why there was such a big increase. And unfortunately, she says, like everything else, their costs are going up, so they're having to, of course, pass the cost on to us. Also asked her about the existing support that we're getting from them, and she assured me that she, that CogZell is striving to constantly improve the level of service that we're giving. Talked with Scott LaMasher in our, in our IT department. He says that there are times where it's better, and sometimes it's not quite as up to stuff as he would like, but she assured me that she was trying to work on that. Needless to say, we have an invoice of $61,229.03. This is a budgeted item. We do have the e-Verify, e-Save documentation on hand, and I recommend your approval of the attached invoice.
Okay.
Just two questions. What's this, what's the software?
CogZell. It's our third-party billing software. It interrelates, our billing software with our general ledger package.
And do they have levels of support, level of broad, depending on how much you actually use them?
No.
Or just a one-size...
Just a one-size fits all.
Okay. Any other discussion? Motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, Tom.
Yes, Your Honorable Mayor and Council, the city is also in receipt of an invoice from WRS Benefits for work performed on the annual Casby 45, or OPEC valuation. This invoice is for the amount of $15,400, and covers fiscal year 2013 and 14. Discussed with the owner, Clark Weeks, the reason why we're being billed for 2014. And he said, basically, based on the data collected and the annual contribution, annual required contribution, that he could kind of forecast the future needs of the city, and the work has been done. The invoice, again, is for $15,400. We do have a e-Verify, e-Save documentation on the company, and it is, it is a budgeted item, and I am asking for recommendation, or I'm recommending the invoice be approved in the amount of $15,400.
I'm sorry, Tom, but I should have asked this during the work session. I know you covered it pretty thoroughly. The invoice period, we're being invoiced for all of 2014, or just through July?
It's all of, well, we will actually, fiscal year closes June 30th.
Right.
The report, the valuation is through June 2014.
Yeah. I meant, I meant to say June, not July, I understand. So it just goes, it takes, it's for our fiscal year.
Yes.
And that coincides with, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'll just ask you. Does that coincide with the end of his term with us, or are we typically...
He is, he is on a contract, his contract is kind of on a year-to-year basis.
Calendar of fiscal year.
It's...
Fiscal?
I'm not sure if it's fiscal year or not. It's kind of like engineering, a way that you terminate a contract.
Okay.
These things are going to be used for next year's audit. And you basically, it's kind of like a budget. You've got, we know what active retiree is and existing retiree, so you can calculate that, that cost to...
Okay. All right.
So they're not going to come back next year if something changes for some odd reason and say, okay, well, you owe me $8,000 more?
Not, we're not, by June 30th, we've got a 14-month...
Because I can look into the future, too. All right. There's no other discussion or snide comments. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Monthly financial report.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking tonight at the October 2013 and comparing to October 2012. And the general fund revenues have increased over last year by $588,000. Remember, a couple months ago, we got a large Geo, Georgia DOT reimbursement, and we also had some property tax collections that have increased in the month of October this year versus last year. The expenses have increased this year by $724,000 over last year. This is due to increased personnel expenses. We had three pay periods in the month of October, and also increased operating expenses. The three areas of revenues I look at on a monthly basis are local office sales tax. Of course, we're having a decrease of $183,000 in that account. Police fines and forfeiture's were down by $54,000 compared to last year. And billing permits and inspections, we have an increase of about $7,700 over last year. The water and sewer fund revenues decreased over last year by $88,000. This, again, is due partially to the lot of water that we've gotten from the rain. And the expenses have decreased by $54,000. This is due mainly to decreased capital expenses. And the gas fund revenues increased by, over last year, by $420,000. Expenses increased by $963,000. This increase is due to increased personnel expenses, operating expenses, increased cost of purchasing, purchase gas, and also capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues have increased by about $228,000. Expenses increased by $285,000. This increase is due to personnel, increased personnel expenses, increased cost of purchasing electricity, and increased capital expenses. And stormwater fund revenues increased over last year by $59,000, and expenses decreased by $71,000, due mainly to decreased capital expenses. Remember, last year, we were doing the pre-mitigation disaster relief, in which we were trying to buy three pieces of property. We were successful buying two properties last year, and finally got a third one this year. And in the solid waste fund, revenues increased from last year by $18,000, and expenses increased by $112,000. This increase is due mainly to increased personnel expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by $45,000, and expenses have increased by 29, I'm sorry, $24,000, due mainly to increased personnel expenses and operating expenses.
Okay. Any questions for Tom on the financial report?
Yeah, Tom, I think I've asked you this before, but most on every one of those, we have it listed, it was, the decrease is due to, or the increase in expenses due to personnel expenses. Where's that coming from? Because we've raised the cost that the employees put in.
In the month of October, as I said earlier, we had five pay periods.
Oh, okay.
Typically, we only have two.
You mean three, three versus...
Yes, I'm sorry, three.
It's okay.
I don't know why I was thinking five, but three, three pay periods. Coupled with the fact that our insurance...
You made a lot of people behind you real happy there.
Couple that with the cost of our insurance going up, that's where the, where the increase is.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on the finance report? Go ahead.
Any of you surprise off the K discount, or, or, when they request a full payment?
We do, we are offered from vendors, not, not all vendors offer that discount, but those that we are able to take, we do, we do take the discounts.
Do you have a concept of approval from the city council in that respect?
No, no, sir.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
We have discussion item relative to our tax anticipation note and the payment that's due at the end of the year. Tom, you're going to kick us off with that discussion item, please.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, in January of 2013, the city issued TANs, which are tax anticipation notes. These are to be used to complete construction of the joint safety headquarters and fire, fire station number four. This was due to the SPOSS collections at the time decreased, and they are still decreased. In order to pay off the existing TANs, which are due in the end of this month, 12, 12/31, the total amount that we need to pay back is $4,318,490. The current SPOSS account has about $3 million in it. We have two more SPOSS collection checks to come in from the county, along with three collections for transportation ad valorem tax. The total amount we expect to collect is around $565,000. The total deficit at this point in time looks like we're going to be looking at about $765,000. There are two scenarios in which we can pay for this. One is to take those funds out of the general fund, and the second is to reissue TANs early in the calendar year 2014. I've done an analysis, as far as the general fund is concerned, I do believe that the general fund can absorb the $765,000 estimated deficit. If we don't, if we issue TANs, of course, we're going to have TANs to pay off next year. There is a cost to issue those. The typical cost is around $15,000. I've talked with Gabe Hagan, who's our bond broker, and he informs me that he would try to negotiate that cost down to around $10,000. And we would still have that bond payment next year, or TAN payment next year. His suggestion would be if we could find some other way to absorb it, to go, that's the way he would go also. My belief also is that it's such a small amount, that it's not really worth the effort of going through and issuing TANs on such a small amount.
And when you say small amount, that's relative to issuing bonds and going through the process and...
Correct.
Going through all that. From a bond standpoint, it's almost not worth it. All right. For council, this is a discussion item. In layman's terms, we've got a choice whether or not to dip into savings a little bit and pay a bill, or to spend a little bit of extra money to extend it out, what we, what we already have to pay. And you can hear Tom's recommendation is that we, did you give a recommendation? I'm sorry, I meant, I know it is. I just didn't know if you said it.
I don't think, I formally gave a recommendation, but I talked over Mr. Grove, and he and I are of the same belief, and I'll make the recommendation that we go ahead and absorb it out of paying it by, out of the general fund.
I agree.
Okay. So council, before you, this is, you know, it is a discussion item, but it doesn't preclude us from giving them the direction that they need, and we can do that in the form of a motion. But certainly after anybody, everybody has the opportunity to discuss or mention anything that they'd like to relative to this item. And if nobody has anything to say or add, we could either go on to the next item, or if somebody would like to choose to make a motion to give them some direction, I'd be all for that as well.
Mayor, the appropriate procedure would be to make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Thank you for that.
And then to vote on that item. If that, I believe the item that is being requested to be added is to authorize staff to be allowed to pay off the TANs out of the general fund.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to add an, add an item to the agenda.
So vote.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And it passes unanimously. And that item on the agenda, as our illustrious attorney has pointed out, that this is for the, the authorization of the TAN payment from use of general funds.
Well, Mayor, we discussed it in the work session. We have a recommendation.
Would you like to second Lori's motion?
Sorry, I was... I'll put the draw on there.
She's going to get the gap again.
I'm going to get coal in my stocking from you. I've given you a hard time tonight.
I would be happy to second her motion, yes.
All right, so I've got...
Lori, sorry.
I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council, for that, and thank you, Tom, and thank you, Keith, for keeping me in, in step. And apologies to, for my actions. All right, we do have another, another discussion item on tonight's agenda, and I'll call Mr. Anderson forward to start this conversation.
Yes, Sir, Mayor and Council. First, I want to recognize, we have a, I know at least one reg board member, Rick Holoff, in our audience, but what this discussion item is, at our October meeting, the Recreation Advisory Board, the members present, which were five members present at that, that meeting, they voted five to nothing to recommend to Cartersville City Council that you call for a property bond vote for parts of recreation. That would be a one mill increase to max out at 10 years, which would generate approximately $8 million. I have submitted a proposed list that I think... I have, uh, uh, submitted a proposed, uh, list that, uh, uh, I think it totals around, uh, seven point nine million dollars, somewhere along there. Uh, there's a lot of things that this does not address. Uh, the things that it does address, excuse me, uh, it addresses, uh, we have two, uh, trail projects, uh, that have, uh, in the next couple of years, it'll come due, the city's match will be approximately five hundred, uh, or so thousand dollars for each project, so, uh, one million of that dollars would go towards the, towards these, the completion of these trails, or for the, the city's match of these trails. Uh, the majority of the other mon- or the other money is going for the, uh, would go for the, the renovation of our existing parks. Uh, Dillinger Park would receive approximately sixty percent, uh, of this funding. Uh, it would include, uh, completing our, uh, our field lights, uh, changing our fencing, working on our shelters, uh, changing out our bathrooms, uh, at shelters, at concession one, at tennis. Uh, again, uh, we did a renovation project at, at Dillinger last year, the Dillinger Pool. Uh, during that time, you, you, we realized that Dillinger Park is, uh, well, thirty-eight years old this year, uh, and we've got several items that need addressed at that park, as well as several items need addressed in our other parks. And that's what this, this ref- this, uh, property bond does. It calls for us to, uh, maintain our, our existing parks. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I, I do have one question that we did not talk about in the work session, and you may not have a quick answer for this. I'm curious on the full code that we are now looking at having to enact. Are there any updates, physical components?
If you're new construction, it wouldn't affect, uh?
So it won't affect, like, bathrooms and other things, but we've got other laws we've gotta worry about and plan with that. Just making sure there wasn't anything else hidden in the work preparing for us.
Yes.
Okay. Well, council, you know, we, we had this discussion, I think during our visioning session earlier in the year, about the need for, um, for recreation, uh, maintenance, and, um, and how to go about doing that, and I think Greg's come up with a, with an interesting way to put it into the, the minds of the, the taxpayers, is to, to decide for themselves how important recreation is. Certainly, we're proud of our facilities. Uh, we're all aware that times are, are tight everywhere, and I think this puts it in the hands of, uh, of the people in the city. So, um, that being said, um, you know, the, there's only certain times of the year you can have this, and we can, uh, I guess it's kind of leaning towards May twentieth during the primary, if we were to proceed to do this. I do want to reiterate, this is a discussion item at this point, that no final decision has been made, um, that the list that, uh, Greg has presented, uh, is, you know, there's, it's a proposed list, uh, it was put together by the Recreation Board.
No, not Recreation Board, this is put together by, by, by myself and staff.
Okay.
And this is what, you know, determine the, you know, the, the mea- what our immediate needs are for Dillinger Park and other facilities.
But the recommendation to proceed has come from the Recreation Board.
It, it, it certainly has.
Okay.
Again, you know, there's other items that, uh, have, you know, I guess just as much merit as some of the items that, that, that were, that are on it, you know, so, and we're more than happy to, you know, we, we want, we want public input.
Okay.
I think that probably my two comments would be, I, I think this is a good idea, and putting it to the community to help us decide is a great idea. I think, uh, including a mechanism as we look toward what we're going to do to encourage community input and stakeholder involvement on the project list makes a lot of sense. And then the other thing that I mentioned at the work session that still remains important to me is if we are considering a millage that's dedicated to Parks and Recreation, that we make sure that it doesn't turn into just a general fund millage increase at some point in the future, so that it either ends when we achieve our goal, or it is allowed to continue, but it remains dedicated to what it was intended for to be done.
Well, and, and again, you know, that was something that was addressed, addressed during our park board discussion, and, you know, we felt like it, it's important for this, you know, a- again, if council chooses to do this, that it's important for, uh, the citizens to realize that, you know, that'll be, uh, they tax themselves, but at a certain point, when that money, just like the SPOSS, it, it's, it, 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 we, we collect enough money, or the time has run out, and, and, and it comes off. It's not something that, that keeps going. We, and, you know, we, we felt like the ten years was, it would, you know, you know, of course, there's, you know, there's a lot of needs out there, but, but, you know, uh, we felt like ten years was, was, was a fair amount.
Would it be possible to put into something like that, again, I, I think all of us kind of share Lori's belief that we really want to make sure that we've got this thing, that it doesn't turn into something that becomes commonplace. Could it be written into the first referendum, or into the details, that it could only be extended by another referendum?
I don't believe so. I believe the appropriate, uh, procedure is that, you know, the referendum would expire upon the occurrence of a set event, wh- um, what, whether that is a time or raising a certain amount of money.
Okay.
Um, I don't believe you could actually legislate away your legislative report.
Okay.
It is basically what you were asking.
But, uh, but to continue it, or for it, for that millage rate to continue, we would actually have to take a specific action to continue it. It would just be in-
I- if it was approved in such a way that it, um, would expire. But of course, the, uh, Mayor and Council, you know, at any time has the right to oppose whatever millet they feel is necessary for the operation of the city.
Yeah, you would go through the process of setting it every year, actually.
I realize that, and I also realize what we currently pay right now, and one of the things I pride myself on is this-
One point four.
-city has done a marvelous job of providing essential and needed services, including Parks and Rec- Recreation, for virtually no tax impact on residents. And I would love for us to be able to continue that and not start this, a policy of increasing taxes over time, because that's just one of the things I think we do incredibly well here.
Well, Keith, can you put a time figure and a dollar figure, and whichever is reached first? Can you do that kind of thing?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I would actually have to research that to determine. I believe it is possible, but I don't want to tell you a hundred percent definitely that it is.
But you're pretty sure, I mean, when you put a time limit on it?
There can either, there can be either or. I don't know if it can be the earlier of which occurs.
But I think that tackles your-
Yep.
As long as we know that there, there is an end there.
And, and the question that, you know, y'all will need to decide somewhere at a law report is whether you wish to fund it by, uh, having all the money upfront, which then would, of course, require a bond issue, or whether it's a phased-in development of those funds, which may not necessarily require a bond issue.
May not require a referendum.
At all. Yeah. Um, so, you know, there's some logistical questions that, um, y'all will need to make some decisions on with respect to this, once it's been determined, um, how the city wishes that this to be presented to the public.
But if the schedule, as Greg mentioned, some of the needs, I think, are, there's some timelines, I guess specifically to the trails piece, if that was included in there, I think it would probably require bonds to get the money upfront to handle those timelines that we already have in place, would they not?
Um, I'm not sure exactly how much money would be raised by the millet, or what the proposed millet would be set, but I would think that scenario is definitely possible, that you would have to have a bond to meet the proposed time schedule, or you alter the time schedule to coincide with the amount of funds that are raised, uh, under the proposed millet. More a pay-as-you-go system versus, you know, taking out a bond or a loan to go ahead and pay it all upfront.
And I'll just mention my preference on that, would be not, to the extent we can avoid getting into a situation where we're borrowing money or having to be faced with a loan payback, or a TAN payback, or a park debt payback that hits us every year. If we can do a pay-as-you-go as much as possible, I think we're really still at that point in time, otherwise we're gonna commit hugely, because it seems to be a hit on something almost every year.
Well, and you can also eliminate the bond fees, and you can eliminate the interest payments on it as well, so you're, somebody not like that, but, uh-
No opinion on that?
No, sad, sad.
Well, and the, and the purpose of this discussion is to see if, if council, uh, from a philosophical or from a, just a, you know, from a policy perspective, if that's something that council is interested in pursuing, uh, the possibility of this recreation property bond. Um, and it's listed as a bond, so that's kind of where I got the, the upfront piece. But, um, so is there any other discussion, pro or con comments that need to be made, um, relative to this, as we consider it?
You're gonna give council an opportunity to see the full list that you have, right? This is just your initial rollout.
Definitely. I, I, I mean, I mean, yes, e- everyone would have that opportunity to, I mean, council, of course, but, you know, as, as well as the general public, you know, to, to, and what you were discussing, that was one of the things that we had discussed with, with Gabe Hagan also, was the possibility of, you know, prioritizing them, and then, you know, just take a certain amount upfront of bond money, and then doing the remainder as, you know, a pay-as-you-go that would, it would give us more money to put towards park projects.
Okay.
Greg, do you have any idea over the last ten years, the percentage of increased use of our parks, let's say, leave out team sports? Do you, do you have any kind of, it seems to me like it's been a huge increase, just people walking and jogging, high mountain.
Well, I mean, if our, as far as our park usage, I, you know, of course, I, I do think it is up, you know, as far as our, our, some of our programming, we had this discussion earlier, uh, you know, one of the things that the city council did in two thousand and one, and, uh, in preparation for the, for the pass bond vote, was we, uh, the council, uh, implemented a non-resident fee. And, and, and doing that, you know, of course, that generated additional monies for us, but what it also did is, is it, it really, uh, lessened our program numbers, and it la- instead of, you know, and, not in ninety-nine, we built two new baseball fields. In two thousand and one and two thousand and two, we built four new soccer fields. And since that was been implemented, we, you know, we have been able to maintain what we have. Now, we've had to make some, make some adjustments the last couple of years, as far as baseball's growth, and we've moved some of our programs back to Dillinger Park. But, you know, that's one of the things that, 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 that non-residence fee did, is it, is it slowed down our growth and allowed us to be able to, you know, to maintain, you know, what we, without having, have existing facilities, new facilities.
I guess my perception is just people eating around the lake at night. I mean, we're not capturing any of those numbers, because all of those tables are full, uh, people walking. We just, there's no way to capture that.
Right, and, and, you know, again, you know, I, the numbers that we, that we have is, is the numbers that we have for, for our reservations, but as far as somebody just coming in and walking in the walking trail, or around the track, or, you know, using the picnics, uh, using one of the individual tables, that's not something that we do track, but I can tell you that they are, they are-
It's increased a lot.
It's, it is used.
I agree with you, Diane. It seems like it's always busy around the lake, people walking, people either on those basketball courts, on the tennis courts, and it is the, the collector facility in the community. We have not just city people using it, we have people in the entire county who are coming to that park, because it offers so much. It, it does offer sports and walking and relaxing and sitting and looking at the fountain and the lake, and, um, so I know maintenance is important, but just trying to stay ahead as well, and you've got a facility that's almost four years old, it's been a, an ongoing challenge for us, so it seems like this is a good way to figure out some way to dedicate some funds, if there's community support.
When's the last time we did a big renovation to Dillinger Park?
Well, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we started in, uh, around two thousand and six with a plan to change out all of our, our field lighting for our, the original, uh, three softball fields, the football field, and tennis. And we ju- we just finished that, that about two years ago, and during that time, we did, we've done tennis, all but two poles on tennis, did every, uh, and we have spent, uh, uh, approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on, 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 on those, on those five facilities. And that's really the only thing we've done, other than, other than the pool last year.
Okay.
Now, we did change out tennis fencing about three, about three or four years ago.
That sounds about right. Any other discussion, or anything needs to be brought up at this time? And I guess this, I don't, Mr. Lovell, since it's not an agenda, an actionable agenda item, just a nod of consensus, or is there action that's required by council this time?
There was no action required at all. You know, he merely made a presentation to you of something staff is looking at, and at a later date in time, they will bring something to you, uh, formally for that. If y'all wish to have additional work sessions or further meetings and information about it, you may so direct at this time, but otherwise, no action.
So, this is just an idea to get it out into the public eye and, uh, offer, give them an opportunity for input, and, uh, and just take council's temperature on this, and it would have seemed to me that, uh, continue to go by what you're doing.
Yeah, the park board, you know, we, we, uh, we are meeting, uh, beginning in, in January, or, early, uh, our normal meeting would be in February, but we, in anticipation of, you know, pulling together the, our champions and who's, you know, a, a separate, a separate committee from, uh, like a People for Parks, uh, committee that will be, uh, I guess soliciting this.
Okay. Is there any other discussion that needs to be had on this item?
No, just to thank you and the, and the board as well, thank you, because it is an ongoing struggle to figure out how we're funding this budget, because there's, it's always so tight, and if we can come up with a creative, outside-of-the-box way and to move it forward, it's just really appreciated.
Well, you know, and, you know, the, the board and myself, you know, we've, of course, we've been through the budget stuff, and, you know, we know that our trails are coming up, and, you know, we're either, you know, they're not gonna get funded, because there's no money unless we do something about it.
Hey, Chris, I'm wondering if I was the rec. said, for Artwell County, any kind of, do you ever have, uh, meetings of other rec.? And it's so, uh, would be a good question to bring up about how do you handle strangers on the reservation?
Uh, we do meet periodically, and, you know, there are, there are agencies that are just like us, that have not, you know, non-residence fees. There's a lot of, you know, there's several agencies, there, you know, our non-residence fee is very minimal compared to what's others, you know, a lot, a lot of them will charge exactly half what the program is, and, and that, and, you know, we're, you know, we are, we are minimal, as far as our twenty dollars per, for youth and a hundred dollars per teen registration.
As you know, Greg, I hate to exclude anyone. I think it's, it's great that we're inclusive and give young people a chance to participate. I mean, there may be some point where that has to be looked at again, but-
Well, you know, again, our, you know, Dillinger Parks, our walking trail at Sam Smith Park, as, you know, they, they're, they're, they're covered up. They, they, you know, they are used, and that's what they're, that's what they're there for, for, for the public to use.
Also, if you're walking alone and there's a lot of other people, that's a good thing.
It is.
There's people around, it's good to know you can go there.
All right. Everybody good? Thank you, Greg.
All right, thanks.
Uh, is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening?
Christmas.
Okay. What's that?
Christmas.
I didn't hear you. What'd you say?
Christmas.
Christmas?
Yes.
Well, I was not at the Christmas parade this year. I'm sure everybody enjoyed the parade probably just as much, if not more, even though I wasn't there. But I do want to, uh, take a minute to thank the Exchange Club for their organization, putting that on there. Of course, it's a fundraiser for the community, but also, uh, to everyone at the city, uh, certainly the folks that are keeping people safe during that event, uh, the, the people that put the lights up and make downtown look real good, to the people that clean that thing up. I, from what I hear, it was quite a mess after everybody left, and by the time everybody got up in the morning, it was, uh, up to its usual clean standards. So, I know it takes a lot of dedication and time, uh, by our city staff to, uh, to make that happen in such an orderly and efficient manner, and so, I just want to thank them. For those who celebrate Christmas, I say to you Merry Christmas. If you don't, Happy Holidays. And, uh, if there's nothing else to add, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Same move.
Send a vote.
Adjourn. You get a harum by that guy.